I would like to call to order the Tuesday, July 1, 2025, meeting of the mound planning commission. This is a regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Planning Commission member Wallace.
Yes.
Planning Commission member Baker.
Here.
Planning Commission member Drew Heel.
Here.
Planning Commission member Samantha Whacker.
Here.
Planning Commission member Young. Planning Commission Chair David Good.
Here. We have no amendments to the agenda. You have the agenda as submitted by Sarah by email. Are there any questions regarding the agenda? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as distributed.
Motion to approve as distributed.
Second?
We have a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. You have the June 3, 2025, regular meeting minutes also as part of the meeting packet. Does anyone have any additions, corrections, subtractions? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the June 3, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Motion to minutes as distributed.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on, Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Planning case 25-06, substantially similar use determination. Ms. Sarah.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, applicant and guests. My name is Sarah Smith. I'm the Development Director for the city. And I was the principal writer of the planning report that we're going to review this evening related to requests that we've received from Molly Williams requesting a substantial use determination for a portion of the property at 2378 Wilshire Boulevard. On the overhead is a map that shows the location of the building and the property. And I'm just going to get everybody acclimated. This is Wilshire Boulevard. This is Maywood Road. This is where we are right now. Actually, we're back here, but this is the Public Services Building. The building on the property sits nestled up to the west side of the property at budding Wilshire Boulevard. And the back of the property is, basically has the majority of its frontage on Maywood and is generally encompassed by a parking lot that was constructed around the time the building was constructed back in the day. Ms. Williams is proposing to reuse that existing building. It's been vacant for a couple of years. And the proposed use is office generally. Offices are listed as a permitted use in the mixed-use district. General speaking, the existing office configuration in the front of the building is going to be same, similar as to what we see now. However, they are proposing some, what I'd call flex space in the eastern part of the building that would allow for some community and corporate special events, community space that could be used by members of the community, local businesses, individuals for a purpose of gathering, for a specific purpose. That's really why we are here this evening because while it is a similar use to an office, it's not listed as an office type of use. I think this is kind of a new thing where you're seeing a lot of the corporate and office buildings becoming more multi-use. Folks maybe are not working specifically in the office, might be working at home and might entertain use of space within other buildings or other locations. In this case, I think that the program is somewhat similar to that, but they also want to have that opportunity, that they want to host a little bit larger event in that flex space for corporate or organization or community, that that would be allowed within that building. As I've said, while that's not specifically included in the definition for office, we do see those uses in other types of buildings or properties that are in the mixed use. Specifically, we often see meeting space in restaurants. Those are permitted uses. Private lodges and club, we often see community space. Public buildings and institutional-type buildings, we see community space. So we see this as a similar use, just happens to be in an office type of environment. Ms. Williams is proposing to purchase the building from the current owner, Ray Ellis, in his corporate Ellis Properties, and is proposing to do some interior and some exterior remodeling. I won't get into a lot of those details because our applicant is here and I think she'll kind of want to walk through with you what her plans are. We did include in the staff report just kind of a general summary of the type of space that they're contemplating. Basically, office, meeting space, space that accommodates networking type of events, improved technology, consulting rooms, areas where groups could converse, that sort of thing. But again, there would also be that opportunity that a larger group could utilize the larger portion of the building and utilize some of the spaces within the building. Just a moment as I scroll down here for a moment. The graphic on the overhead was supplied by Ms. Williams and it shows the current configuration and proposed location of the office space that is included in the building and what that current layout is. So you see that the west side is basically offices of different sizes, bathrooms, kitchen facilities, and various meeting rooms, et cetera. And as you can see, kind of the area that's a little bit larger when it talks about flexible corporate working space, that's the area that we're looking at now that could be multi-used, not only for networking events, but for other types of purpose that may come up for groups, organizations, companies, et cetera. Ms. Williams also provided just a possible general layout of what that building could look like. Bear with me here. Bear with me. Turn this map so bear with me. Two more times. This is kind of, I think, a larger concept of what that flex area could look like. As you can see, general areas of seating, tables that could be utilized for different types of endeavors or activities. They are looking at improved technology in the buildings, screens, Wi-Fi, all those types of things that enable activities to take place, not only socially, but also electronically to assist with meeting events and also activities that relate to the need for those types of endeavors. They're also looking at some site improvements outside, improving their landscaping, some bike racks, I think some tables in the back. Some cleanup of the general parking lot area is contemplated as well. It is note that there is an existing fence that I think borders the adjacent properties to the north that is in some need of some repair. And we do have a requirement in our code that says that commercial uses that are adjacent to residential zone properties are required to have a fence. And so that fence will need to be repaired, replaced, so that it isn't keeping the appropriate boundary between the corporate, the office building, and the neighbors to the north as well, and that's in the code. We have recommended approval of this and we've included conditions and findings in our report. What this evaluation does is, what it says in our code is that unless that use is specifically addressed, it's not allowed. And so what folks do is, when we see these types of requests, they're looking at other uses that are similar or have similar uses within those buildings. And that's why we're here this evening. I think that the important thing to remember is that the office use, which is the primary use, is permitted. It's this unique and probably very progressive flex area that you can use for a lot of different things, isn't encapsulated in the office definition, and maybe that's something that we need to take a look at. I don't think it's contrary to what we're seeing out in the field with changing business models and how people work, et cetera, et cetera. So we have supported their request for this allowed use of incorporating networking and meeting space in that east half of the building. The applicant also provided some informational data on how it is primarily, this is going to be a daytime use, eight to six, so we're not going to see a lot of nighttime. They have indicated that as part of their business program that they may offer some special events that could scooch outside, you know, maybe a food truck here and there, and that's also allowed by the code for a private event that's catered and specifically for that type of event. I will happy, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know Molly probably has some information she'd like to share about timing and what her plans are and, you know, maybe a little more detail about architectural changes. And we may have some questions from some guests, so I'll stand for questions when ready.
Okay, questions or comments for Sarah?
I only had one question was, I assume, given the size of the parking lot, there's no issue with parking. What's the zoning for something like this?
That is a very, very, very big parking lot, and we haven't done the parking calc yet until the breakout. But what the code also says is that unless there's an intensification of the building, you don't trigger more parking. But I don't anticipate that there's a parking shortage based on what we're seeing for the use, but that will be part of our process as we go.
Okay.
And there was another graphic I just wanted to share because I think, and again, this isn't specific for this project, but Molly did provide some, what I thought were some interesting concept photos of what that space could look like in a typical day. And I thought that was kind of nice to share because it gives one a flavor of what it could operate and look like within that portion of the building.
So, question. I know this is across the street from an elementary school. Maybe this is out of our purview. What about alcohol license, things like that? Is that within our purview or something?
The property is not eligible for a liquor license because of, you have to be a restaurant to get a liquor license. If there was alcohol to be provided as part of like an outdoor activity, they would have to procure a temporary one-to-four-day liquor license like all the special events do.
Right.
And/or hire a caterer that has those licenses, but you can't dispense liquor out of the building.
Okay.
So it's just not eligible under the mountain code. Doesn't mean they can't, if they can get a temporary permit with a sponsor, which has to be a 501(c)(3), or if the catering license would allow for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Do we know capacity for special events at this point, or is that something to come?
That will be worked out in cooperation with what their final site plan is. And we had a meeting with the building official and the fire chief and public works to kind of talk through some of those things. The capacity for the building will be determined based on their layout and seating, on how many they can have, and it has to meet those numbers for space. And I think they indicate, I thought they said that would be an assembly type of environment. No different than when other buildings are evaluated for how many seats that they can have.
Right, right.
Further questions or comments for Sarah? Okay, thank you. Hearing none. Ms. Williams, would you like to address the commission?
Sure.
Our custom is you state your name and your address, please.
Okay, my name is Molly Williams. My address is 5075 Windsor Road Mound. I live by Allen Elmas. I am a local mom, business owner. My current business is called The Optimists. It's a travel agency. We specialize in booking and managing travel for large entertainment groups on tour. So I used to be a tour manager and a road manager on the road for many years and moved here in 2014 when I had a baby. So my current business has an office in the Lost Lake Office Building on Commerce, and I've been renting there since 2017. My business has 13 employees, but all of them are remote, so nobody else works here with me. I have a six-year-old son who'll be in first grade at Shirley Hills and 11-year-old son that'll be in sixth grade at the middle school. And I've just driven by this building, you know, five times a day for the last 14 years. So yeah, Sarah gave a very excellent description of what we're looking to do. The idea is that the building would be called The Bright Spot, sort of by The Optimists, so it's sort of an extension of my existing business. Sort of a bright spot in your day, somewhere to go, connect, collaborate with community peers and be able to work outside of your home, as well as several like monthly office rentals. So my current business would be like the primary tenant in the large corner office of the building. And then I would look to lease probably five of the other rooms, you know, on an annual, monthly basis to businesses similar to mine. And then utilize the larger space as flex working space. You could have, we'll have some dedicated desks, you know, different levels of privacy, some just more open plan. You could get a day pass, so anybody, you know, sort of an easy barrier to entry, $35, get a key code, whatnot, go over and work there. And then, yeah, so I am in a purchase agreement with Ray Ellis. The due diligence period ended yesterday and I am moving forward. So, you know, we know we want to do the office part. The events part is a bonus, so hopefully we can do that. The idea would be like Sarah mentioned, but you know, if we can, wants to do something or association, you know, club sports association meetings want to use a space, networking events, some of the kind of classes of makers and teachers that do the community ed classes that we often take in the small boardroom at the WAC, those kind of things, just a lot of, as well as, you know, possibly anniversary party or graduation party, those kind of TBD, you know, seeing how the space lays out with the renovations and whatnot. So that's kind of the concept. I feel like I've gone to a lot of events at the Peak Event Center in Excelsior, and I'd love to see more of that stay in mound. They just also happen to be a travel agency that owns their building, but you know, different vibes than their building. But yeah, so, I mean, the renovation plan, it's, you know, we're keeping the building primarily as it is. I'd say the biggest change is adding 10 windows into the east part of the building because there's no east-facing windows there, and that will be the front. So the parking lot will be the front entrance. So, I mean, I don't know if we want to go back to it, but anyway, putting, so putting windows into that space, sealing and painting the parking lot is a big piece of it, obviously, to get it to code and ADA. And then it's basically flooring, walls, and lighting. So replacing the existing lighting with LED lighting, replacing the plumbing with low-flow plumbing, getting the bathrooms and the kitchenette up to code for ADA, but keeping, you know, the bones of it all the way it is. And then the one other primary construction piece is adding a wall. Can I go back on this?
Sure.
All right, let's see here, it's 13. So if you see here, I'm just looking at cutting off, so this is like, this is where the delivery door is that faces the salt cave and rum jungle. So I'm wanting to put a wall in here just to make the room a little bit smaller because it is enormous. And then that would be kind of like a backstage, so deliveries, mail, supplies, and whatnot. So making the big room a little bit more intimate. The idea here is like built-in booths, so some different style of, you know, two-to-four person seating. This is like the concept for the 15-person boardroom, conference room, and then this would be like a built-in banquet with movable tables. So you could, you know, take meals there, would be good for gatherings. And then this is like a coffee bar. So utilizing the existing location of the water in the building and just adding like a, you know, small fridge, coffee, sink, and dishwasher. And then all this would just be a mixed-use, flexible, easily movable couches, tables, different style tables. This is kind of more like the private desks, and then, so you kind of see the windows cut out here. So that's the...
What kind of timeframe are you looking at here, do you think?
Looking to close on July 10th with Ray and then get the contractor started right away, so starting construction in August ideally. So opening early 26. Yeah, probably factoring, you know, six months for construction, so probably, what is that, August, September, October, November, December, probably open February.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
So when you talk about upgraded technology, I think, Sarah, you said that a couple of times. What are you talking about there?
Primarily just screens and like HDMI cable use in the conference room, the conversation area, probably in the main room, you know, so you could have presentations in there for a large group, similar to like what they can do at the Gillespie Center. So just screens and monitors and Wi-Fi.
I'm sorry, I'm going to assume there's no asbestos in this?
No. Yeah, all the inspections, the inspector gave it two thumbs up. Tested for moisture, found no evidence of it, just basically cracks that need to be sealed by the exterior painter. And they did not test for radon because they said it's very uncommon in a single-story unit and it's very involved. And we've had surveys that have said we don't need a further, whatever that's called, level one. Yeah, there's not any concern.
Okay, thank you.
Is color of the building going to change?
Not, probably not. Paint it cream, but may add some color to the parking lot side of it.
Yeah.
Okay, further questions for Ms. Williams? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Are there others in the audience who'd like to address the commission regarding this planning case? Yes, sir.
My name's Paul Bab, I live at 5259 Eden Road. I'm the property to the north. My concern was the fence. It's in need of repair and for privacy, but you kind of answered my question, that is code, so.
It's in the plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, further discussion by the commission regarding this planning case.
I think it's fantastic. I mean, to take an old building and put it to such a great use. I mean, what a great thing, right, for our community.
I agree 100%. That's why we're here, to support innovative uses of our buildings, make sure you absolutely agree, so.
I think mound can use this.
Absolutely.
Keep people here, right?
I've attended a couple of funeral receptions at the peak in Excelsior, and it was very comfortable, very accessible. Is that the type of event? I guess I don't have an idea of what, is it going to be sort of upscale for that type of an event?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be modern and somewhat colorful, you know, compared to peak, which is mostly wood and, you know, open. So I hadn't thought about funerals, but...
It wasn't a funeral, it was a reception.
Yeah, I mean, I would need to move the mobile desks, you know, but yeah, kind of gathering of families.
It was catered.
Catered, yeah. Yeah, and I guess I didn't mention, in the big area, we're pulling down the drop ceiling to expose them and paint the ductwork. So that'll gain like four feet in the large room. So hopefully, and then they'll also be seating on the outside facing the parking lot, so like some kind of cafe tables and chairs on that side, which I think would be nice if you have people gathering that can go in and out. So yeah.
I guess I'm just saying, don't limit yourself.
Right.
A lot of needs here.
Thank you, yeah.
My company has something similar to this, and it's always full. So it's always full. Price it right, people are going to come.
Yeah, that's the plan.
How do you envision the payment side of it? Like if somebody wanted, would they work with you directly? Will you have a website where somebody can go and reserve space?
Yeah, it'll be all online booking tool.
Okay. And are you imposing like an age for it? I mean, 18 and up, or, I mean, do you envision it? How do you envision the space for youth activities or if there's a need for mentorship programs that bring in youth?
Yeah, I thought about that, you know, collaborating with the high school on work-study. I mean, that's kind of down the road, you know, how to figure that out. I don't know, I just hadn't thought about an age limit, 18 probably, not really wanting to create like a study hall, you know, definitely keep it professional for people that work there on a daily basis.
Further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none on page five and six of your materials. You find that staff is recommending that the planning commission recommended the city council approval of planning case number 2506 with two findings and four conditions.
I will make a motion to approve planning case 2506 for the substantially similar use determination for 2378 Wilshire Boulevard, including findings of fact one and two, page five, and conditions one through four on page six.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thanks, Molly.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for doing it. And thank you for coming.
Advance this to next Tuesday.
Okay.
Because the A's are was provided. Now it's so good to come in.
Yep, and it is also at six. In the same room, same channel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, 2025 Planning Commission.
We're happy to have you, thank you.
2025 Planning Commission term explorations.
Yes, we have, one of the things we had talked about at our joint meeting is to let folks know earlier. And so we have the terms of Ms. Wallace and Ms. Young are done at the end of the year. You were a two-year and you were a year, I think. And then we have the open vacant seat also. And then, we have the open vacant seat also is up for reappointment or, I think one of the discussion is, is the number of the commission, is it going to stay, is it going to get skinny, is it going, anyway? And as our, as we talked with the planning commission in the council workshop, the council wants to evaluate its appointment procedures and so, that is, that has started at the staff level and then, so we'll just see where that takes us. But for those, for Ms. Young and, and Ms. Wallace, if you have interest in reappointment, reach out and then we'll forward the, we'll forward the current form that we have now and hopefully you'll stay with us and, and we'll get that into the hands of the city manager. But I don't have any further information on that, sort of, that's just something that the council wants to look at in, in mass for how they interview their candidates. And so, it sounds like they wanted to take that responsibility on, so.
Question for Sarah about this?
And I'll keep you posted as I know more.
Councilmember McEnady is not here. Do you have anything to report from the city council standpoint?
What do I have from city council? They are, they'll be working, starting work on budget soon. They are also busy with activities and projects and those types of things. Special events, we've got Spear of the Lakes coming up in a couple of weeks, that's super exciting. I was not at the last council meeting, so I don't, I don't have a lot of detail, but I know they talked a lot about Lost Lake Park or Lost Lake Commons Park in terms of how that's moving along. That's the, that's the new open space, green space park that's right next to Artessa. Stuff that's happening, we, we're anticipating receipt of updated applications for Halsted Point, which is now called North Point. We haven't seen them yet, but I anticipate them forthcoming soon. I would anticipate that if they do come in soon, that that could be on our agenda for the rescheduled meeting in August, which I think is the 19th. Remember that we do not meet on the first Tuesday in August because that's night to unite. That was rescheduled early on in the year, so our meeting, next regular meeting is, a next scheduled special meeting is the 19th unless something would come ahead of that, so, but that's, that's our next one as of right now.
Okay, any other comments from your standpoint?
That's all I have, we're just busy, busy.
Can I have a question to Sarah? So, one of the things I think was on our work plan or whatever is to look at the ordinances for what you can have in your yard. I mean, and I was wondering when that might, I mean, when would we start maybe having those conversations?
Um, I don't have a date for, soon I would hope. That's in collaboration with some, with the field officer and probably our attorney as well.
Okay.
Our, our schedule just hasn't gotten that into the queue yet, but, but it is on, it is on our list.
On our list for this year.
Yeah, for this year if we can make it, yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay, further questions or comments for Sarah?
What about the library? The library, we have building permit application that was delivered that is being reviewed. Our understanding is they want to start work at the end of, end of July. They are also looking on getting their temporary drop-off location set up here at City Hall, so they've been with us for a couple of weeks. So, we're, they are moving forward with their project, which is exciting. Now, we're just depths up to our eyeball in the, in the detailed plans to, to, to look at what was approved versus what we got, to make sure everything kind of ties together. And so, we're hopefully getting a meeting scheduled here shortly, but the application came in. We've had it about 10 days plus or minus, but it's, it's a very, very big package, it isn't like a deck, so everybody got, everybody got some time to look at it, so.
Further questions? Okay, I see we have no information items. If we have no further questions or comments, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. We have a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you for coming.